I'd like to call this board meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Appreciate you coming out. And I'd like to remind you to put your cellphones on vibrate or silent. And right now, we're going to have a moment of silence. Okay, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have the approval of the agenda. Any questions or anything regarding the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I think there is one item that we need to add as an action item. I'd recommend action item number nine B, ironically. So, this will be a resolution.
Did it on purpose?
Yes, that's all. Anyways, it'll be a resolution regarding quote unquote urban beekeeping and the zoning ordinance text amendment for reconsideration of the ordinance that was adopted by the board a couple of weeks ago. And have a discussion about how to send that back to the planning commissioner for further discussion and review.
Okay. Any other comments, changes on the agenda? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move for the adoption of the amended agenda.
Okay, we have Mr. Tech. Mr. Tech made the motion. Who's second? Mickey? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mickey.
Next we have citizen comment here. Each person has three minutes. I have a clock over here. When you hear the little buzzer, that means your three minutes is up. So, first person I have, and I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce your name right, but Anne, can't even read your last name.
It's you, Anne.
Zudikoff or something like that?
Hold up here, Anne.
So y'all just state your name and what district you're from.
I'm in Huddleston. My name is Anne Zudikoff. And I'd just like to say, I've been, I've been living in Bedford County for 25 years. I've been a beekeeper in the county for 20 years. And I'm just, I'm very concerned about these ordinances. I am one of the core members of the Virginia Beekeeping Teachers Consortium, which is a statewide consortium of master beekeepers and researchers who do teach a beekeeping class throughout Virginia. As part of our class, as a significant part of our class, we donate almost an entire session to the responsible keeping of bees and consideration of neighbors in the county, wherever we are, you know, whether on a small, whether on a small lot or a big lot. We consider things such as proximity to property lines. We talk about swimming pools. We talk about the neighbor's perception. We talk about being good neighbors and not trying to keep bees in a vacuum, not trying to keep bees on the sly. In fact, we advise people, if you're going to keep bees, please have a conversation with your neighbors ahead of time. In general, the general public is deathly afraid of bees. You know, a very, very small percentage of us are beekeepers and the rest of, the rest of the population just thinks that we're wacko because we deal with stinging insects. And they're deathly afraid of them. You know, they think they're going to kill their poodle. They think they're going to kill their grandkids. So, we spend a lot of time on this, you know. We just stress that good relations with your neighbors is paramount. Because, you know, because everybody does have an irrational fear of bees. So, we realize that, you know, we have a right to keep honeybees, but it does go hand in hand with the responsibility to be courteous and respectful of our neighbors, the community, and the environment. I just wanted to address a little bit. There was a single complaint that was lodged. I don't know the individual, but I'm willing to say, in his area, from what I understand, even if there were no managed beehives, even if his neighbor did not manage beehives, it is quite likely, in fact, it's indisputable, there'd be bugs, or what he considers bugs, in his swimming pool. There's many, many other species of bees other than honeybees. There are wasps, there's yellowjackets, there's beetles, there's moths. The general public just doesn't know the difference between these things. I understand the complaint was lodged at the height of summer. This was a drought in central Virginia. You know, insects are going to be looking for water wherever they can find it, and that's swimming pools. As beekeepers, we do our best to maintain local water sources in proximity of our bees, but insects from all over go to swimming pools. If these regulations were enacted, he'd have those bees in his, those bugs in his swimming pool anyway. So, I have a lot of other comments, but you can, you can read them. I have sent a letter to you. But in summary, I'd like to propose that the strict definition of beekeeping as an agricultural endeavor maybe could be relaxed or maybe accepted in the case of residential beekeeping. Because a lot of families keep bees for a lot of reasons other than agricultural. You know, just for personal health and enjoyment, for personal pollination of their vegetable gardening. You know, I can see a slippery slope where, you know, urban vegetable gardening could be considered agricultural and outlawed. I mean, it sounds like this is where this is going. So, I do propose that maybe we can reconsider that strict definition. I also propose that we consider the regulations that Virginia Department of Agricultural Services, Agricultural and Community Services, Consumer Services has enacted. This is V-Dax. They've spent years talking with beekeepers, talking with communities, talking with, with everybody to develop a rather extensive common sense set of guidelines for keeping bees in all areas of the Commonwealth. There are some restrictions. On a whole, they're very, very responsible, and they take into account both sides. They did a lot of research on this. They just didn't listen to one person who complained. So, that's what I have in summary. Thank you very much. Appreciate you hearing me.
Don Gardner?
That's, that's me. I'm a retired veterinarian and a dairy heifer raiser. Ladies and gentlemen, my sons Andy, Sam, and I graze and crop about 1,200 acres in Walton Store area of the county. We raise dairy heifers for dairy farmers in three states and employ about seven people in the farming and fencing enterprises. It goes without saying that you can't farm without farmland. Obtaining access to such farmland is one of our farms' biggest challenges. I've attached two articles that explain the situation far better and more completely than I can. I hope you will read and carefully consider the information they contain. There are lots of information classifying what is prime farmland, and we hope when development is considered in the future, these land classes are considered. We have discussed these issues frequently at our ag board meetings, and hope you will agree that prime farmland is irreplaceable and needs to remain in that capacity if Bedford County is to be an agricultural county in the future. Also, the ag board and the agriculture community want to sincerely thank the Board of Supervisors for their stand on issues preventing the loss of farmland to solar developments. I've shown this, I talked in here about information regarding prime farmland. And I've showed this book to three of the, on the boards so far, three or four of the boards. Does anybody recognize this book? It's called Soil Survey of Bedford County, Virginia. And in it, it has all of the soil types that's in, in the county, identified, classified, tells what their highest and best use is for, what they're, what they're, what they can and shouldn't be used for. And each one of them is broken down. It has the entire county as an overlay, as a map in here, showing the different soil types that are listed in those major areas. Then, in the back half of the book, you can go to your neighborhood and find your exact location. I've got the Walton Store area bookmarked because I refer to it at least two or three times a year when I'm filling out our nutrient management plan to comply with the nutrients that you have to, as a farmer, comply with for the farming program and the soil and water conservation districts. It's, it's an invaluable piece of information. And I want to read you where this come from. This survey was made cooperatively by the Soil Conservation Service and the Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University and the Bedford County Board of Supervisors. Did you know that y'all put this together in 1984? This survey was financed in part by the Virginia Department of Conservation and Historic Resources and the Bedford County Board of Supervisors. It is a wonderful, in-depth study of all of the farmland, all of the land in Bedford County, and it should be referred to and looked at any time there's development or any other thing regarding land use on an official basis. And what I, what I want to bring to you is that there's a lot of land in this, in this world that, as my daddy used to say, all it's good for is to hold the world together. And then there is a lot of land that we have, we're blessed with in this county, that is what we call Class One and Two farmland. That took millennia to develop, to get to the point where it's usable. And we ain't making any more land. And I just would like to implore you to look at that land, preserve it, so it's not covered up with concrete and lost forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have Todd Ramsey.
Hello, my name is Todd Ramsey, and we own a farm in Bedford, about 15 minutes from here. And we're not farmers. We just own the land, and we let someone else graze it. And I have no aspirations of being a farmer. It's a daunting task in today's world. And I think it's our job as people that live in agricultural-based county that we do whatever it takes to support agriculture. And that means protecting beehives, protecting farmers, young men and women who want to be in farming. And that means making sacrifices. That means that there's going to be unhappy people that might have to deal with bees in their pool every once in a while, or have to drive slow behind a tractor going down the road. And that's the price you pay for living in a beautiful, amazing county like this. And we have to make sacrifices. We need to build an ag center in this community. Our kids deserve it. They need a place to be able to expand their horizons, learn more about agriculture, how to make money at agriculture, and not have to compete with land prices. And there's, the list goes on and on. What this board could do to do tangible things to protect small agriculture. And one of it is by protecting the beehives. That's a real easy tangible step tonight. Expand what they can do in those, and to say that Bedford County is even urban is ridiculous. But there's no reason why we should restrict people that want to invest in being self-sufficient and improving their local ecosystem. We should do everything that we can, even give tax benefits to those who want to start their own hives. And technically, inside of the zoning restrictions that you have, agriculture is prohibited inside of these urban areas or these zoning areas. But there's plenty of gardens in those areas, and that's technically agriculture. So, how much are we going to police this? How much do we want to invest resources in trying to corral this when we should be promoting it and encouraging it? We should want people to move into our county that want to invest in this. We should be, we should be working hard to get away from large-scale developments. We should be working to get away from condominiums and any type of high-density homes. We don't need it. We need to be investing in agriculture. And by restricting agriculture, even in this tiny little area, is just another step in creating another roadblock for people to be self-sufficient and be able to create their own, their own life. We should be promoting people to have chickens and have gardens, grocery stores. The grocery bill now for our family is double what it was five years ago. That's absurd. And the quality of our food in the grocery store is lower than it's ever been. We should be pushing for our local producers to have as much opportunity to produce, grow, and sell their, their products in our county. There should be a haven. There should be an oasis from any of the concrete and developments that are around us. We should be a haven for people to come here to grow their, what, what they, grow their vision of a farm. That's what they should be finding here, not more taxes, more restrictions, more oversight. That's, that's not our goal here. That should not ever be the vision for this county to do that. Y'all have a great night.
Roger Jones?
You'll have to excuse my informal dress. It's kind of hard to do button and zippers when you're only one, one arm guy. So, I'm here representing the Montville Preservation Foundation. And we've been involved in this for about three years now. And the purpose of the Montville School Preservation Foundation is to save the school building for community activities, meeting facilities, daycare, farmer's market, which will go along with the bees and agricultural stuff, and to increase economic growth opportunities. We have been contacted by parties already in the last three years. Two of those parties would like to put child daycare there. Some of those rooms were already set up for grade schools and had the short desks and tabletops and things like that. So, we have two of those with, because there's no childcare between Bedford and So we have two of those with, because there's no childcare between Bedford and Bonsac. So anybody that works in this area would really like to have a childcare service there. One gentleman lives up Goose Creek Valley, he has a barber shop, and then he'd like to move down here, that way he wouldn't have to travel so far. There's been interest for a pizza shop, coffee pastry shop, restaurant Satellite Brewery, which I thought was interesting, an insurance agency, and when we first started, one of the hospitals would like to do something in this area to compete with other hospitals to gain more clients. And we plan to secure letters of intent once we get a clearer picture on moving forward. Some of you are very aware of, of our activities and have questions, so. Our finances, through events and farmer's markets, concerts, and donations, we have in the bank account right now twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars in our checking. We ran out one spray, one space to a Roanoke Church Plant Group for Bible study every Monday night, and for a homeschool group, they meet there twice a week for exercise and coordination of the homeschool people. So there's already a, a demand, we wish the facilities were a little bit better, but, and we do plan on getting, once we see forward, it's going to go, we do plan on getting letters of intent from those people just to make sure they are really interested, because you, you gotta be able to make money to keep going. Right now, for grants, through the Department of Environmental Quality, Roundsfield, the county's already received fifty thousand dollars for our use, and they will send more money once we have permits and have contractors in place to do work to fix it up. We also have been told by Senator Warner's office that a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar plus grant will be approved once the budget gets approved. Right now, as you know, the, the true budget hasn't been approved, and they just keep extending things in Congress, but, and at one time, there was money set aside by Bedford to tear it down, of course, that was like seven years ago, so you're probably looking at another, another thirty percent increase just to tear it down, and y'all are probably aware of the money that was set aside to do that. The current needs we have, Master Engineering in Lynchburg will study the roof structure next week through Jimmy Robertson, and to ensure structural integrity for a new roof, because that is the main concern right now. Two years ago, if we'd had money to kind of fix the roof a little bit, it could save hundreds of thousands of dollars, well, thousands of dollars, I won't go too much, but the estimated roof cost for the entire school was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that was gotten by Jimmy also. Just to give you a little bit about my background, our, our reason I'm here tonight, our co-chair, well, our chairman, she's in a hospital with some issues, and so she may not be there for quite some time, but I'm the co-chairman. Just to give a little bit about my background, I'm a mechanical engineer, got a degree from VCU and HVAC a long time ago, Tennessee Tech Industrial Technology. Two days after I finished my last exam, I was drafted in military, served during the Vietnam War period, Navy Second Airborne, and have thirty-five years plus of military service. As a matter of fact, four years of that was here in Bedford for a company. So I'm very familiar with Bedford and the history and, and a lot of that, and my wife's from Bedford County, and after retiring from AEP, well, I worked the same engineering firm twice and AEP twice, so I don't make enemies going back and forth, I always get increases, so that's a, I think that's an asset. But I would like to see this go forward, because there is a need, especially for the daycare, there are a lot of people moving into the county, and again, I have bees on my property like forty yards from my house, and I've taught all my grandchildren they can rub them and play with them, because they won't sting you, which I think is amazing, somebody's scared of bees, but if you learn a little bit about them, they won't sting you unless you mash them. So anyway, that's all I had to say, and I would like y'all's support in helping us finish that project, but I think the economic opportunities that would add for, for this end of the county would really be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have signed up. Is there anyone else that wants to speak for the citizen comment period? Okay, I close the citizen comment period, move on to consent agenda for Mr. Hicks.
All right, Mr. Chair, we have two items on the consent agenda this evening. Item A is a resolution approving the submission, acceptance, and appropriation of a creative communities partnership grant application to the Virginia Commission for the Arts, and that grant is for the, for the Sedalia Center and a couple of their signature activities at their, on their property. And then item B is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to submit the make-ready grant application and appropriation of those funds if awarded on behalf of Zytel, and that's for an approximate five hundred thousand dollar grant, and the board has approved a couple of those applications previously.
Okay, is any board member have any questions for Mr. Hicks? It's, I don't know why I want to call you Hicks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm, I can't remember the item A, the details of that.
It's a, it's a grant to the state to help the Sedalia Center essentially with their, two, two of their major events, the Celtic Festival and Highland Games and the Bluegrass Festival. It's basically for forty-five hundred dollars through the Virginia Commission of Arts, just to help with marketing and other costs to put on those community events.
So it's a grant from the state?
It is.
Any other questions? Got to get a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda's read.
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Parker made the motion, Ms. Beasley second. Your roll call vote. Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Beasley.
Yes.
Mr. Tuck.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next is approval of, of the minutes, and two items have been corrected on there, I think that y'all have them on your sheet. Page three, adjourn the work session, not Mr. Tuck, and on page eleven, need a motion and a second to adjourn, so they were correction. Any other corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes that's corrected.
You get a second?
Second.
And Ms. Parker made the motion, Mr. Davis made second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a public hearing presentation, and a presentation of proclamation recognizing National Future Farmers of America Week, and this will be presented by Mr. Tuck.
So, just a, a little thing, my dad was the first state officer from Bedford County in the fifties, so it's a pretty big deal in our family.
Nineteen fifties.
Yeah, it was the nineteen fifties. We still have that FFA, FFA jacket, too. So I'm going to read this proclamation for you guys in recognition of National Future Farmers of America Week, whereas the Future Farmers of America and agricultural education provides a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resource systems, and whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members, and whereas agricultural education in FFA ensures a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs in the science, business, and technology of agriculture, and whereas the FFA motto, recite that for me, I bet y'all know it, you should know it, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve, gives direction and purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education, and whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation, and whereas agribusiness has, has always been and continues to be an integral part to Bedford County's economy and prosperity, therefore be proclaimed that the Bedford County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize National FFA Week from February fifteenth through February twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Well, if Edgar's going to get that picture, I want to get that picture, too, but I don't want to stand too close to that tall kid. I wasn't talking to you, boy. All right, next on the agenda, we have a continuation from December the ninth, meeting consideration of a resolution approving special use permit, SU twenty-four zero 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 on behalf of Carriage Square LTD, resolution R one-two zero nine-two four dash zero five. Who's doing that? Gordon.
Looks like Jordan.
What was his name, John?
This is presentation by Community Director George Mitchell.
I think he's already presented.
You closed the public hearing, that's why I got me confused. So, yes, so as you mentioned, Carriage Square LTD, Mr. Beasley's here tonight as well, had submitted a special use permit to you all to construct twenty-one townhouse units on parcel number one-one-seven-two-five-six-zero-zero. The property is also has, is addressed as sixteen-three-eighty Forest Road, is eight-point-eight-nine acres in size and is located in Election District Number Four. Property's current zoning is PCD and quarter-overlay district. In summation here, the reason they're asking for the special use permit is because, one, the townhouse use requires it, two, there is a certain percentage in the PCD that allows them to use the property for residential, and that percentage is thirty percent, so the twenty-one townhouse units makes up the thirty percent that is allowable in that That's all I have, Mr. Scott. That's all I have.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair, this, this is the one that got held over from December because I had to leave unexpectedly, so I apologize for that, and I want to thank the board for holding off to allow me to return and be able to weigh in on it. I, I know during the citizen comment period, there was some concern about stormwater erosion or, or stormwater control potentially affecting the neighboring property. I'm not a hundred percent sure if that was adequately addressed. I know that, that was left, left up where maybe some details weren't necessarily nailed down on that particular issue, and I think the person making the comments, the neighboring property with the farm, just wanted to confirm that that wasn't going to create a hazard or problem for them, because another project across the street had created some problems for their operations. Can anyone tell me if, if that's been, if anything has changed? Do we have any information on that at all?
Was it go through the site plan process, assuming you approved of, of the use tonight's? The amount of water that would leave the site has to be equal to or less than it currently is now. I think what maybe the gentleman was probably concerned about would be that while the site is under construction, there could be some silt fence releases from silt fence failures and so forth, which could have some issues on his property. I don't really have any answers for that really for you, other than, I mean, that's, that just kind of comes with, with, with construction projects in general, that's just going to happen. That's the best answer I can give you.
Okay.
I think the other issue that was outstanding was, is how sewer was getting there, to what I remember from the hearing.
That's correct, because I think they had indicated that, that there was sewer line on their property, but there was no easement to get access to that, and they were not intending to grant one.
The joint, the neighbor was not willing to grant it, that's correct.
That's correct. And I would be very upset if, if that was somehow done by force later through some type of eminent domain or some other type of, you know, legal action. So is there, is there a way that we can ensure that can't happen?
You could place a condition on it if you want to, on the SUP, be my suggestion.
I was thinking, I might be wrong, but I was thinking that it was discussed they could drill under the road, cross over to the other side.
There's several other options, right?
You know, and, and that I didn't have so much of an issue with, it was mainly, I did not want to do anything to disrupt the, the farming operations that are adjacent to this. You know, they, that, that, that speaker and, and those brothers have spoke to me personally about this issue, they don't have so much of an issue with the development, but they don't want their property affected, and I would, I would tend to agree with them. So that's been a, you know, that's been a concern of mine, because that's a concern of theirs. I will say, I'm, I'm not thrilled about the business model of this development, specifically because it's not owned locally. I would prefer a local ownership, and I know, you know, that something might start out as local ownership, and then it gets sold off, and someone, you can't prevent that from happening, I, I understand that, but right off the bat, we know that, you know, this is not locally owned, and I've been concerned about that from, from the get-go, because it ends up becoming a, a vacuum of dollars that are earned in our community and then leave our community and go outside the community. And so when I look at the macro picture, I like for those dollars to stay in the community and recirculate and be reinvested in the community, because it increases our wealth rather than takes the wealth from the community. So I'm very torn on this issue. And, and quite frankly, I don't want, I don't want the board Uh, and, and quite frankly, I don't want, I don't want, um, the board to feel obligated in any way to follow my lead on this issue, just because of my district, because honestly, I could, I really could go either way on this issue. I really am struggling with it, uh, maybe more so than, than usual. Is, does anyone else have anything they wanted to add before I made a motion on this issue?
Yeah, Supervisor Sharp, I'd just like to concur with you about anytime farmland is infringed upon, you know, I, I have a problem with it anytime we infringe on somebody that's trying to make a living off the land with agriculture. I would like to be sure that that's not gonna be the case.
Hi, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I seem to remember the gentleman, the farm, the neighbor farmer, when he spoke here in the previous meeting in December, where he said he was very concerned about all of the, you know, the disappearance of the, the soil, so to speak, and you've got, you're replacing it with roofing, asphalt, concrete, and, and taking that, that, most of that property and water that was once absorbed, would, would once be absorbed into the ground, you know, of course, some does run off in periods of severe rainfall, but that's always been the case there as long as he and his brothers have farmed there. And they farmed there for, I don't know how long, but I'm sure Mr. Sharp knows. But, you know, as, as someone who's been dealing with soils and excavation all my life long and farming, I'm, I'm very well aware of what happens when you go in there and, and, and cover the, the earth with, you know, these impermeable surfaces. And, and I've driven, I drive by there regularly, that property, and I've looked at it especially closely since December. And, and I, I just think that, uh, that we're gonna put a, an enormous amount of water into the pastures that he's, you know, using next door for whether it's a few cows or whether he's trying to farm it. And, and we're, when you're Supervisor Tuck, you understand this very well, if, if we're in a period of heavy rainfall, and we need to get into the fields to bale hay, and by the way, they, well, uh, to bale hay, it takes a long enough time where we've got good drainage to where we can get back on these pastures and mow the pastures and, and, and make our hay. But in a case like this, where you've got an enormous amount of water running down on these pastures, and it's gonna collect on there and stay there for longer, and it's very rich soil in that area, which, which holds it, um, it's, it's gonna be difficult. By the time you get on it, your, your hay crop is gonna be so far along, it'll be so mature, it won't have much nutritional value. And, and the, the end of the story is, is, and another point to be made here is, is those folks were some of the most generous for the folks in North Carolina, you know, providing them hay, uh, at no cost, uh, after the, the horrible floods that the folks in Western North Carolina experienced. And, uh, I, I think that, uh, I know if, if, if I were those folks farming that land, I would really be, um, concerned about it. And I think it could be devastating to them economically.
Anyone else?
I mean, do you have something?
I got something to say. I'm familiar with the land, I go by it 10 times a week. First place, I don't think any runoff would hurt the pasture at all, because it's like a swamp down there in the bottom, right now, that the, if the cows went over in there, they'd be up to their knees anyway. And right straight across the road, same setup, they got residential, retail and everything over there, we, we approved all of that. And, uh, this piece of land, I, I personally, if, I, I agree with Mr. Sharp that we shouldn't infringe on the white farm, any kind of a make, I don't think we couldn't make them anyway, I think it has to be a public interest to have a public domain, and this would not be a public interest, this would be a private interest. I don't think we could do anything there, or they could do anything there. And if they're gonna drill across the road for their sewage and everything, um, I, I don't see where it would hurt to, to grant them permission to use this land to do what they wanna do in this situation, because, like I said, the bottom down there is not pasture, it's, it's just flat, murky stuff that's been there for years and years and years. And the pasture, you'd probably have to cross 30, 40, 50 feet of this creek running down through that before you would even get up into the pasture. So, I don't think the cows go down there, and I don't think it would affect them as far as their pasture grazing or anything. So, I, I would be in favor of, uh, granting them permission to go ahead with this project.
I have a question, Jordan. Outside of those townhomes, are these commercial parcels all right?
Yes.
So, it's going in there regardless?
Yeah, and they can still build 30% of it for any other residential use that would be allowable, single-family homes, um, those types of things too, so.
They got that all right, right?
Yeah, the only thing, the only reason you're here with the special use tonight is because they're choosing to do the townhouse versus the single-family homes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make one more comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
On an annual basis, I, I go up to, uh, New Jersey, and, and I see all the congestion and the multifamily housing that's up there. If, if you wanna put houses in our community, I suggest a single-family house. This is my personal opinion. And, and, and from what I have learned from folks that live up there in New Jersey, especially, I've got a close, personal friend who lives up there, and, uh, on his, I think he lives on maybe a half an acre, he pays in property taxes north of $20,000 a year. And, and I've heard even some members of this Board of Supervisors try to tell me, tell me that they believe that if, if we had more people living in Bedford County, our taxes will be lower. And, and I find that if it wasn't such a ludicrous statement, I'd laugh at it. And what I'm saying is, is, is we keep on putting townhomes and multifamily homes in Bedford County, it's gonna, the traffic's gonna be so ridiculous, which it already is anyway. 221's impassable at certain times of the day. I guarantee you, I know this because I drive it at certain times of the day when it is impassable. Emergency vehicles can't get through. And, uh, you know, then you're trying to get, um, perhaps a, a fire truck or, or an ambulance through, through, to, to those townhomes and so forth. With all this multifamily townhomes and so forth that, that we're proposing to do, you know, we're making the, the lifestyle of our county worse. Our taxes are going to go up, not down. And I, for one, am strongly opposed to this project for no other reason than that as well, because if they wanna put houses on it, put single-family housing on it, no problem there.
Alright, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna make a motion... ...to deny the special use permit.
I second. Okay, you heard the motion, Mr. Sharp, to deny it, and Mr. Davis second it. Roll call, vote, Mr. Davis.
Deny.
Uh, it'd be a yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
The one in there regardless.
Yes.
Frazier?
Yes.
Chair votes no, motion carries. Okay, the next thing on the agenda... Action and discussion items. Consideration of a resolution authorized county administrators to execute a contract for demolition and reconstruction of the pickleball and basketball courts, Resolution R 021025-02. And Chris Higgins is gonna make that presentation.
Which one is this, is it this one? Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. I'm here today to discuss what we've been talking about for the last few months and is very popular in the community. I know a lot of people are gonna be excited to see this on the agenda, which is the renovation of the tennis courts at County Rec. We will be renovating them into a pickleball and a basketball facility. So, just to discuss the little bit of history, we have, there was a request, RFP, the project at County Rec for the pickleball courts. It was identified in the capital improvement plan for FY '25 for $100,000, with future planning of another $200,000 in funding going in FY '26. We actually discussed this late 2024, that the board wanted to actually go ahead and not wait until FY '26 to bring this project forward. So, the scope of the project would be demolition of the existing tennis courts completely, as they're in very poor shape, and the construction of six pickleball courts in their place and one basketball court to replace the existing basketball court that is there in poor repair. The base bid was the design of the new courts, as this was a request for proposal in the existing footprint, so no additional impervious surface will be added to the property, and construction of the new courts and installation of all associated features, including new fencing, benches, and et cetera. Uh, the design was also provided by the contractors when they did the proposal, uh, which was more economical. We also had an alternate bid, which was installation of sports court lighting to extend the hours of the courts, um, essentially in the winter and early spring months, when of course it gets dark much earlier, like we're experiencing right now. Uh, but the base bid did include making sure all the conduits there in case we needed to come back to it later. Here's the limits of disturbance that we had discussed, those are the existing tennis court facilities, uh, which includes three tennis courts, uh, at County Rec right off of Bedford Avenue Extended. And you'll see a little easier in your package, that writing is very difficult to see, even my eyes are not good enough for it, so I'm going to pull it up on the page. The new design on the north side of the tennis courts, where the single tennis court was, will be the new basketball court. Uh, of course, this will be completely surfaced, um, with a, actually sports, uh, surfacing in asphalt, new lines, uh, that will be placed on it, and also, of course, new hoops. All the fencing on the whole facility will be demoed and replaced, including all, uh, light structures that are currently there, as the lighting system does not work. On the south side, you will see basically, which our pickleball enthusiasts have explained to me, uh, north, uh, north and south facing is a lot better.
Right.
Uh, when it comes to the sun in their eyes. So, we have six pickleball courts, instead of doing a slight flop, it's, of course, more economical for the county to leave in the existing footprint, but it is almost north and south, which they said would be fine. Uh, you will see the fencing goes completely around the whole facility, and there's a little four-foot fence in between the courts with openings, that's actually a safety feature, because of course, if you're on opposing courts, you have your backs to each other, ball goes flying out of one of the courts, you don't want somebody to step back on a ball and then end up hurting themselves. Uh, this contractor and their design actually included putting in a sidewalk where we have existing gravel, which will be completely, uh, removed. Uh, the sidewalk will make the courts more accessible for all people, uh, going to the existing parking lot that is there. A few of the other features you see on there, if you wanna look at it, it says optional. We'll be going over what exactly the county's looking to do, which is just the base bid. A lot of the options the county is not gonna move forward with due to funding. This is the base bid. Uh, we have been working with, uh, uh, GNH Contracting, which is based out of Roanoke, after a very extensive bidding and RFP process, which a committee of county employees, myself, the parks manager, uh, DW, uh, we also had finance present, of course, procurement, and then Doug, uh, which is the director of Public Works, all on it. We've decided to go with GNH or recommend that GNH is the best contractor due to their experience. Uh, this is their base bid that they have provided the county, which you will see basically all the items that are laid out. They did provide a lot of really nice alternate bid items as we opened it up, as this was a design-build concept. Uh, we will not actually be going with any of these items due to budgeting, but this, of course, great ideas, we have the design provided by the contractor, so a lot of these features, including especially the lighting, could be added later. County staff is recommending to the Board of Supervisors to provide authorization for the county administrator to sign the contract with GNH Contracting Incorporated for the base bid, with none of the alternate bid items that the county asked for or they proposed. The Board of Supervisors would also need to provide authorization to transfer additional $276,870, which we already, when we originally went to, talked about this at the end of the year, it was already proposed that we would be looking at a minimum of $200,000 is what was budgeted as part of this project for FY '26. Uh, I worked with Ashley, uh, she recommended that reappropriation of $129,075 would come from the Red Barn Project, which is on hold, and also $147,795 from the unallocated CIP provide, to provide the additional funding necessary to complete this project. Approval of this recommendation leaves a budget of $30,000 in the Red Barn Project to complete the exterior painting that is needed there, and also will leave $5,857,888.51 in the unallocated CIP to be appropriated towards future projects at the county. Thank you very much.
Can you go back to the picture of the court?
Yes, sir. Right here.
So, none of them courts have any fencing whatsoever separating them?
The, um, currently, um, to explain, there is three tennis courts here. So, you have two tennis courts on the south side, and they're facing the, uh, south and north, they do not have a fence in between them, but if you go up to the one that is facing perpe, or parallel to Bedford Avenue, there is a existing fence that is in between them, uh, and then, of course, a fence structure that's completely around the facility. The fencing that is existing is in very poor repair, it was actually, part of it was taken down when that health department project was going on there right before COVID, um, and it has not been repaired, it's, needs, it would need to be replaced. And along with, we would be completely demoing the asphalt that is there, because it's been damaged.
So, Chris, inside the fence, inside the fence, inside the fence, there's one fence that goes across, that separates the bottom from the top, but there's nothing that goes in between the three courts on this level, right?
Not currently.
Right, right, I mean, you don't, and no plans in it, so.
Yeah, oh, for, for the new one, no, they're...
Typically don't have, you don't have that with tennis courts either typically.
Oh, no, 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 I, I was just trying to answer your question.
So, go back to the options where you got prices, so...
Currently.
They had, uh, where did I see it at?
Add for fencing, separating courts.
Yeah.
Yes.
$800.
They, they had originally proposed to separate each court individually. Uh, we found after speaking to the pickleball community, they said, while it would be nice, it would really restrict flow, and it would be not a needed expense. So, if you go back, the only, the only one we included, if, just to show you also, it's a little easier to explain pointing, you'll see that little line right in between the three sets or the two sets of playing, and there's little gates that are just gonna be wide open, we're not gonna put gates, it's just a safety feature, it'd be about this high, and it's to stop halls rolling when somebody's playing and going into their back.
But it doesn't protect, those, those side people, if you're in the middle one, the ones on the side, won't be any fences there, except on the edge of the court.
And is, is that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm not a pickleball player, so I don't know.
In fact, it restricts your game.
So you like it without the fence?
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty typical, the way you find a tennis court.
If they don't want them, we don't want them. I've just questioned.
Yes, sir.
They'd be running on top of each other when they play.
They, they said if they had anything in between, they would prefer some kind of netting system. Of course, that was not part of this bidding process. It's something if the county wanted to approach it later, we could always add it on, but at this time, we're just going to leave them open when it comes side to side.
What people do, it's, it's four people per court, so that's 24 people if everybody showed up, but I don't know that you'll have that much play on it, but if you've got eight people out there or 16 people, they're going to play on the corners and leave the open. You know, if you've got eight people, you're not going to put them on top of each other. I, I wonder what kind of surface? I didn't catch that.
It's actually a three-coat special acrylic surface that's particularly made for basketball courts and pickleball courts. That's one of the most important things when we were reviewing the, the RFPs that were provided was the subcontractors that they are using. That's where you see a lot of these facilities fall flat when people do not do that properly, and that's also with replacing the asphalt. Some, one RFP we received was actually to resurface the existing, which, of course, when you look at value over time, the cracks that are in the existing court would come through the new asphalt. They were also proposing using a contractor out of Georgia, I believe, do the surfacing. The contractor that is being used by GNH is actually based in Smith Mountain Lake. He holds most of the VASCUP contracts for the state, does all the work for all the universities. I've worked with him about 21 court projects. He's outstanding, and he's local, the local company, and when something doesn't go awry, you get a dead spot in the surface, you call him, he fixes it.
Is he by chance the one that's doing Mariners Landing?
Yes. He's also the one that did the new, actually, this company as the general contractor and that gentleman, that new tournament facility that's over in Salem, that Salem is extremely proud of, that's bringing national tournaments to it, they built it.
The ones that set up east to west.
It's a beautiful facility, but it was, that was actually built by this general contractor and surfaced by the court contractor. So the contractor that was selected by the committee is all very reputable and is going to do a outstanding job, and they were definitely also not the most expensive contractor that was, that made a proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask, what kind of warranty are we getting with this?
None for me.
All, all surfacing products would have a warranty. We would, of course, get that from the contractor as part of his middles during the project. I, I want to say you, if he goes with the Titan, I believe is the main one he does because they're all regional, I want to say it's like a seven or eight-year warranty on the surface, which on average, these surfaces last depending on use. So heavier use, they wear out faster, but gen, that is generally a very good warranty, but I'm not exactly sure without it in front of me.
Any more questions?
Well, since it's my district, I wouldn't mind saying something. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Parker.
Just want to ask, we talked about this earlier about improving the parking area along Bedford Avenue where it's the road, then it's the gravel, then it's the grass area, and it's in really poor shape. I guess that's not a part of this RFP tonight, but did we put that out separately? Because I know we talked about going ahead and doing that.
Yes, ma'am. I wrote, wrote that as RFB for bid. I worked with Public Works and the county engineer because there's some water issues there, which caused the past asphalt to fail, so we've investigated that. We have IFB out. It's advertised right now. I don't have the exact dates in front of me, but it is coming up. I just answered questions, so I would say it's probably due in the next few weeks.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Um, how, what's the anticipated usage of this facility?
Anticipated usage?
Yes.
We, we actually have a pickleball program, which I know Mickey is familiar with, that's at County Rec, which is our, no, excuse me, the county gym, which is over near the Fallen Creek facility, which actually at times has a waiting list to be able to get in. It's an indoor facility. It is four days a week. It's a very popular sport. It's one of the fastest-growing sports in the United States as, is, is a, basically a easier form of tennis. It started out with the senior community, but it's really opened up to everyone at all walks of life and all age groups. So it is extremely popular. People have really been clamoring to have this type of facility as we don't have an outdoor facility in the whole county, or at least a public facility like this, and then we can have it open seven days a week as long as it's daylight, just like the park is where people can go out there, so you're not held between the hours that we do our open program at the gym.
It was, it's so popular over there, Supervisors Davis, they probably get 40 people easily, I would guess, a day. I don't know if you've been over there. They have four courts.
Mm-hmm.
Four courts, and it's always people waiting to get in, so that's 16 plus usually another 10.
Gives people something to get up out of bed early in the morning just to go reserve spot.
What they, it's so busy, what they had to do is set two sessions, and so you couldn't sign, you couldn't just go over and play anytime you want to. You had to sign up for the one o'clock session and then, I think, a four o'clock session.
If this place is going to be getting so much use, what's the maintenance on the surface?
The surface is just basically cleaning, which we would take care of in-house, and once again, it would.
Who's, who's in-house? Who's going to take care of this?
Parks and Rec Maintenance would actually take care of it. Generally, you would talk about a yearly cleaning of it, which is power washing. We own the equipment to do that preemptively. We had some pine trees, which you can see, that are on the south side of the courts. We had them taken down because pine needles are highly acidic to this type of surface, did not want them to be hanging over this new surface, so we went ahead and took care of those as we knew this project was coming up, and some of them were in poor repair anyways. But when it comes to maintenance surfacing, if you want to keep it pristine on average, you're talking about a, not asphalt, but putting a fresh acrylic surface on it every 10 to 14 years and looking at nets, probably, depending on use, once again, every four to five years. Average surfacing for a court this size in current pricing, do completely strip it. If you waited until the very end, prices I was seeing would probably be about $20,000, and that's every 10, 15 years.
Um, the fence, can you go to the, where you had the price breakdown?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure this has to be a tall fence. I, DW is probably right up your alley, but I, I just am totally taken aback at a fence costing $74,000. I mean, I can't, what are the linear feet of fencing you're talking about doing here?
Uh, if I remember correctly, and I do not have the figures in front of me, I wanted to say if you went north to south, it was roughly about 160 feet, 180 feet, and then it was roughly, I want to say about 100, or 80 feet across. So you have 10, 12, I believe it's 12-foot fence all the way around, and that is a sports fencing, so it's reinforced on the bottom, top, and middle. A lot of fencing you'll see on like a commercial yard. You'll actually not have as many crossbars.
Hold on a second. So you're saying it's what, like 500 linear feet? You said 160, so that's 320.
Well, you.
And then 80 and 80 is 160, so that's about what, 500 linear feet? Is that right? I'm just trying to get an idea on this fence.
Yeah. 300. Yeah, I would say about 500 linear feet, and then you have about another 80 linear feet of four-foot fence, and then you have multiple gates, which gates are an expensive part of fencing because the gates are actually completely encased.
I mean, like I said, we put fences around our swimming pools. On that note, I'm going to have somebody make a chemical that keeps bees out of their pools. So, so we're talking about around $150 linear foot, which seems reasonable for a fence of this type, this size. I just wanted to check on that, and, and there's no way that you can grind that asphalt down or something like that and, and put this surface. In other words, it's got to be, everything's got to be completely taken out to read it, to get this for what the surface that they're putting on there. I understand, you know, when you go to putting something down over something, the, the finish you're putting over top of whatever that base is will only last as, as good as it bonds to that base. I get that. So, so we're, I mean, I just want to make sure there's no room for some, some kind of savings on this project because we're looking at, at, at other projects and certainly the school board's spending and, and the landfill and all this other stuff, and before we pull the trigger on this, which, which I can certainly understand, a lot of people want this, and I feel like we need to make sure this is what, we, we know what we're getting into here.
As part of the RFP process, Doug and myself actually, well, it was a virtual meet, sit down with the, once we had selected a vendor to negotiate with, the price was already negotiated. We had both had some ideas. As you see on the alternate bid, the performance bomb was originally in the base bid that they provided. We had that removed as that's not required at this project amount. They also had some permitting fees, which we looked up regulation that they did not have to have in, and the county is also going to allow them to take the asphalt to the county dump and waive tipping fees so that we're basically not paying them plus markup to pay ourselves. So there was negotiations as part of this. I do want to point out, we, we did receive multiple proposals. One was rough, was significantly higher than this one. There was actually two that were higher than this original proposal that you're seeing here. The fencing also, just so you know, which I think you'll like, we're trying to move to a coated fence, the black-coated fence. Not only does it look better, this is a, look better, especially in our town, it actually lasts longer.
Absolutely.
And it is, and a lot of people do not realize, I moved to it in Lynchburg, it lasts longer, and it's only a few percent overall material, on the materials alone, more expensive. Of course, it doesn't affect labor if there's a little coating on the fence.
Your district?
Well, I have a problem with it. I don't have the number of what I'm trying to vote that we approve, recommend that we approve. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I recommend that, that we approve resolution R1, R021025-02.
One second.
Mr. Davis made the motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Johnson, second. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Ms. Baines.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. All right, the next item on there is NAN-B, NAN-BEE, E. I'm going to try to cut through a lot of discussion and everything. We will, we'll make a motion if it's okay with y'all. To make a motion, we send this resolution, which basically says we're sending it back to the planning commission and telling, asking them to reconsider this with residential sections on beekeeping hives and everything, residential section is by right. And that's, it's simple, it covers everything, so that's my motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm not sure if we all received the same email today. There was, the lady that spoke earlier, she sent an email to us that cited, there's actually Virginia code already that covers all of these different things, and she actually suggested that that, they've already worked through this and they have a very good suggestion. They go down to even less than a quarter of an acre, so it covers all the different cases, and it, I would think we should just, I would, seems to me we should ask the planning commission to look into us adopting what the state code recommends.
In, in support of that, I, I would suggest that we ask our Ag Board for a recommendation on this as well.
I've already made a motion. This goes back to the planning commission in that it would be by right. That covers quarter acre, half acre, everything. No fanning strips, no water ponds, no nothing. That's just puts it back into the, where it's by right, so that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion other than what we already heard?
Which takes us out of the beekeeping business. It's by right, they can have their bees.
I guess my issue with it is that we're not beekeepers. We don't know, we don't know about beekeeping like the Ag Board does or like their resources do, and I think for us not to use them, I just think it's a misstep on our part.
All right, we heard the motion. You said, right. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Yes means my motion.
Yes.
No.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Baines?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Board committee reports we have none. Board comments? Any board member have a comment? You're in line?
Mr. Chair, I do have a comment. I'd like to thank all the beekeepers and the folks that came out to the Ag Board meeting the other night. It was a pretty good crowd that came out and educated all of us on beekeeping, and some of them are here this evening. I'd just like to let them know, appreciate them.
I have a comment. I just think it's, again, I just want to commend all these young folks from the FFA and the 4H and the great things that they've learned and they're exhibiting in their behavior, their performance, and what they do for the community, and also the folks that are teaching them and bringing them along and the time and effort that, you know, the folks in Extension Office and their teachers put forward to them. One other thing, I hope you guys don't mind if I share something personal. I got some pretty good reports from the doctors last week, and I just feel great. I, I don't think I've felt this good in a long time, and I feel like we're, I'm whipping this cancer and with the help of the good Lord and prayers of so many, and the treatments that I got in Tijuana, and the treatments that I'm still on at home here today. I just am so grateful, thankful to God, that I, I feel good because I haven't felt good for a long, long time, and I felt like I was near death literally by the end of September of this past year, and for a couple of weeks in Mexico, I didn't know if I was going to make it. Anyway, just, I want to share that, and I hope, I thank you all for listening to me.
Major Patavop.
Any other comments? Okay. Next, we have the county administrator report.
Do you gentlemen have anything? Okay. Sure. Just, we are still working with Kent and others, just monitoring the weather for making decisions about closures and delays for services, but other than that, we do have a closed session on the agenda regarding discussing a lease for the former Montvale Elementary School.
And Mr. Chair, that would be a motion under 2.2-3711A3.
Somebody else made the motion. I second it. Damn it, don't make any difference. We're just trying to move things along.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in closed session. We're in closed session.
All right, we need a motion to come out of closed session?
Still moved? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are out of closed session. Whereas the Bedford County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting pursuant to an affirmative accord of vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Bedford County Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Bedford County Board of Supervisors does hereby certify that to the best each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters that were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting was heard discussed or considered by the Bedford County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So certified.
Okay, next on the agenda is board appointments. We have none. County attorney report?
Other than saying that the forecast is showing I'm supposed to get three quarters of an inch of ice up on my place, it might be an interesting few days for me, but.
That takes down trees and power lines. That's not good.
Okay, board calendar. Mr. His?
Our next board meeting is February 24th. We will officially be kicking off the budget season at that meeting. So the main topic that evening will be the capital improvement plan and anything else we have time to discuss. But we'll start with that on February 24th. And then we'll really start getting into the budget discussions in March.
I do, we just get out of it.
Yeah, yes.
We're gonna have, we're supposed to have the bids for the animal shelter that day too.
We are. Yeah, the bids will come in the few days before that. And that'll be on the agenda that evening for that project.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.